Middle school on Saturday and they're booking another one for next weekend, so. People have some options locally as well.
All right, I think we have everybody here.
Is Kathy?
Yep, Kathy's here.
I can only see nine. Hold on.
Danny, Ed, Jim, Kathy, Mark, Danny and Paul. Yeah, we've got everybody, so.
Okay. I changed it so I can see everybody, but everyone's now much smaller than they were a minute ago.
All right, we'll call through the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, April eighth, twenty twenty-one. The meeting is held virtually and can be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or via the internet going to townhallstreams.com and selecting Bucksport. You can email questions or comments prior to, or during the meeting to suicide. We'll call during the meeting at four six nine seven.
Harrison?
Here.
Deputy.
Here.
And council.
Here.
I would like to move item twelve A up in the agenda. It was set for seven o'clock on all our notices. We've got a large agenda and is there any objections to moving twelve A up to now? Seeing none. Item twelve A, we'll move it up. It's a public hearing is to determine the building structure owned by Assad Kakuan put by virtue of a warranty deed dated March thirtieth, twenty eighteen, recorded in the Hancock County Registry of Deeds at book sixty-eight eighty-one, page seven oh five, and located at one ninety-six U.S. Route One, Bucksport, Maine, and further identified on the current tax map of the town of Bucksport, on file at the town office as tax map two, law twelve. Is dangerous or nuisance within the meaning of one MRS A, section twenty-eight fifty-one. This time I will open the public hearing and I believe we have Phil Sauce here. Is he on this meeting, Sue?
Yes, I'm here.
Phil, yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
If everybody could mute and then we'll, we will call on folks as we go. Thank you.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can't hear you, Sid. If you want to hang on, we'll get to you in just a moment, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Gray, I think you asked me to kind of just give a brief presentation on what the process is that you're going to go through tonight and sort of the standards under the dangerous building statute. So just be fairly brief. This is a process under, as you noted, main statutes, dangerous building provisions that allows the municipal officers, in this case, the town council, to determine whether or not a building is dangerous under that definition in the statute. And therefore, sort of a public hazard and a danger to life, otherwise a danger to life or property. The specific, and I'll just read it just so people hear what the definition of a dangerous building is under main law. It's whether a structure is structurally unsafe, unstable or unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, is unsuitable or improper for the use or occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence or abandonment, or is otherwise dangerous to life or property. So that's the standard that you'll be asked to review after you hear the evidence tonight. The way I'd recommend going forward, I think we've spoken about this, is to first have, since this was brought by the town and the code officer, is to let the code officer speak and present any kind of evidence that he has on the condition of the building and the work that he's done looking at it and inspecting it over the years and any other witnesses or speakers on behalf of the town. I would then, I would then open it up to the property owners and or any mortgage holders who have received notice of this hearing for the property and allow and allow those people to speak as well to the conditions of the property. And then to the extent there's anyone here from the public, allow members of the public to speak. After you've heard from all the, all the parties, I would then close the public comment portion of this public hearing and then the council will deliberate on this. I'm not sure if you have in your packet or not, but there's a, there's a form, but finding's in order. And what you'll do is go through and after you, now that you've heard the evidence is, is make some findings. So in other words, and I'll take notes and help you fill out that form. We'll talk about what evidence was presented. So just a brief summary of what was presented to you. Based on that summary of evidence, what did you find? In other words, did you find there was any, any issue with the property and, and what, what in your view made it dangerous or not dangerous for that, for that matter? And then finally, you would vote whether it was dangerous or not. The final part of that is, is that if you do find it dangerous, and I don't want to presuppose that, but if you do, you would then go on to say, and then what should happen as a result of that? And you've got a lot of discretion there. So typically in our, you, you can give the property owner by a certain period of time to remediate those problems, make certain specific remediations and make, make that property not dangerous. But if it's not done by that period of time, the town council then would retain the authority to go in and either remediate themselves or make any other corrective action, including demolition. That's, that's under the statute. So that's just what you're given as a power if you do find it to be dangerous. So that goes in the order as a typical matter. And then this is, and sent to the owner, recorded in the registry of deeds. So that's the overall process. I'll stay here if you have any questions, Mr. Mayor. And I realize I never introduce myself, so just so people understand who's talking here. I'm Phil Sauce here, the law firm at Bernstein Sure, and we're the town's attorney.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
So, one of those is, as Phil's saying, we will, we'll allow the code enforcement officer, as he's bringing this information to us, present what he asks for information and then we will continue through the process. I would ask folks to mute and if you have a question or comment, we will get to you in due time based on where you are. So when that, when I do, when you do have something to say, please identify who you are by name. We are on, we are on Zoom and sometimes folks aren't coming across. So can you identify your name and, and your title, please? So, Luke.
Okay, hopefully you all received the packet of information that I sent you. I know that Sue also posted all the information items on the town website.
Mike, can you listen down to our place because there's some people in there? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yes, I'm Luke Cavelli. I'm the code enforcement officer for the town of Bucksport. And those items that I was talking about, if you didn't receive them, are available on the town's website to view if you, if you choose to do so. They are listed alphabetically. Each item has a letter designation. So as I'm speaking, I may refer to certain items that you have in that packet. And with that, I will start. So this, this whole situation started in December of two thousand eighteen when the owner applied for an innkeeper's license after the previous license had expired in May thirty-first of that year. That prompted an inspection by the CEO and the fire department, which took place on January eighth of two thousand nineteen. Results of that inspection were concerning enough that the CEO requested a follow-up inspection with the state fire marshal office being present. That inspection took place on January twenty-fourth of two thousand nineteen. Results of that January twenty-fourth inspection included deficiencies, as noted by the fire marshal's report, which is item D. The boiler rooms do not have proper fire separation or protection and must be resistant to the passage of smoke. Doors to hazardous areas are required to have a minimum one-hour rated door and self-closers. Storage rooms and electrical rooms had fiber board, which is extremely flammable. That was required to be removed from the, from those walls and be replaced with a one-hour assembly, which is typically done with sheet rock. Portable fire extinguishers were to be provided in hazardous areas that are not covered by sprinklers. Space heaters, if needed, must be UL listed and labeled to not go over two hundred and twelve degrees and have automatic shut off if they're tipped over. They're also required to be a minimum of three feet from combustibles, which with the size of these rooms is difficult, especially with the volume of materials that a lot of the tenants have in there. Smoke and heat detection interconnected to the fire alarm control panel should be installed in the pipe chase. The pipe chase is a corridor that goes between the rooms, down through the center of the building and is open straight up through to the attic and so having some type of heat and smoke detection in there would be essential to give people an early warning. Concrete deck on the back of the building is pulling away from the building and the stairs are pulling away as well and are not safe. And none of the rooms had smoke or carbon monoxide detectors. So that was the original list of majority of the items that were brought up by the state fire marshal in that inspection. On February first of that year, two thousand nineteen, the CEO sent a letter to the owner notifying him of the seriousness of the violations and warning him that if not taken seriously, it quote, "could have an impact on the use of your buildings." That is item E. Due to inaction, two months later, on March twenty-ninth, the CEO issued a formal notice of violation due to the owner. That's item F in your packet. On May thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, again, two months later from the last contact, the CEO and the fire department conducted a follow-up inspection to review the progress and see if they were working to become more compliant. That's item G. Not one issue on the list had been fully addressed. Of the work that was attempted, no professionals were brought in. Only motel staff were attempting to do the work in exchange for free rent. This is something that's been going on consistently since I've been involved with them. Some of these staff members have really good intentions, but they are simply not qualified to do the level or quality of work that's required in a situation like this. Professional electricians, professional plumbers, professional carpenters are what we need to get in there and get these things done, and that's not happened. The one item in that March thirtieth two thousand nineteen report that the code officer did praise the staff for was completing the installation of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors in each room. Unfortunately, the devices that were installed did not meet the code requirements set forth by the NFPA as directed by the state fire marshal. And I'll explain that real briefly. The NFPA requires one of three, three types of smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector. It can either be hardwired so that if one goes off, they all go off. Or it can be a ten-year battery that's non-replaceable. So after ten years, you toss it and replace it. But the battery can't be removed and it's a self-contained unit, much like what the fire department was giving away this past few years. And the third type is they're low-frequency Wi-Fi that connect to each other and to the fire alarm control panel so that, in a way, it's like they're hardwired. If one goes off, they all go off. The type that were installed, and hey, it is better than nothing, so I'm not going to, you know, downplay it, but the type that was installed where the chief will throw a nine-volt battery in it, stick it on the wall and when that nine-volt battery dies, hopefully somebody replaces it. Unfortunately, most of the tenants smoke, so what ended up happening was they just took the batteries out and it was like there was nothing there at all. The CEO gave the owners at that time another thirty days to get the boiler rooms up to code by installing fire-rated doors, sealing the openings in the boiler room, walls and ceilings, and installing sprinkler heads over the boilers. And we're not talking about a sprinkler system through the whole motel like you might think of a new facility. We're talking a sprinkler head connected to the domestic water supply just over the boiler. Very simple little device that nine times out of ten, when a fire starts, it's, it's at the heating device. So you want that, that sprinkler to be right there and hopefully catch it before it gets out of hand. None of that was done. In August of two thousand nineteen, when I took over as CEO for the town of Bucksport, I had several meetings with department heads and it was stated to me repeatedly that if the state fire marshal's office would take over, they'd have more authority and would have the power to deal with this situation. And if need be, shut them down. I thought that made sense and I figured that was true. So I did. I contacted the state fire marshal's office, requested that they take over the situation and they agreed to do so. Periodically, I checked in with the state fire marshal's office and was consistently told that they were happy with the progress they were seeing. They stated that each time they visited the property, they were seeing improvement. In July of two thousand twenty, I received a report from the fire marshal's office that they had been, they had received from the Spring Fountain. The Spring Fountain had contracted with Lewis and Mom Architecture to do a structural analysis of the walkways and concrete decking and the stairs. The report documented the poor condition of the concrete decks and stairs and gave options for replacement or repair. I was encouraged by that, but no action was taken beyond that report. In November of two thousand twenty, it became clear, both from the actions and statements of the state fire marshal, that they had and still have no intention of taking any enforcement action against the motel. Therefore, I told the state fire marshal's office that I would resume enforcement of the property myself. I contacted at that time DHHS House Inspector to find out if they were aware that the motel was operating without a license. DHS stated that because of the motel owner had told them that they were only renting rooms by the week, that they were no longer considered a motel and therefore the department had washed its hands of it. I don't know how a motel stops being motel just because the owner says they aren't renting rooms by the night, but evidently DHS agreed with that. Having found no assistance from the state, I sent a letter to the property owner letting them know that they were in violation of the town code. I requested a full inspection of the property to determine if any progress had been made during the year the state fire marshal's office was in charge. That letter is item J. I received strong resistance to my request for an inspection. You can see that in item K. On December tenth, two thousand twenty, after continued refusal for inspection, I drove through the parking lot of the facility and did a visual inspection from my vehicle. This drive-by inspection generated a, a new notice of violation for seven violations of the town code that were not previously made. That notice of violation is item L. And that included operating without a license, refusing the full CFP review as required, which is code fire and police. Unregistered junk vehicles on the property. At the time, there were about ten. Those are now gone. Accumulation of discarded junk, mattresses, appliances, furniture, et cetera. At the time, I believe it's in that item, item L, it was dozens of mattresses. It was crazy. Overflowing dumpsters, piles of trash all around the property and dilapidation, decay and defects to the exterior of the property. Those were the items that I could see from, that were going on from the, from my vehicle. On January twenty-fourth of this year, I was finally allowed to complete a full inspection. I was accompanied by the Bucksport Fire Department. I issued a full report of that site visit. That is item M. And the fire department also issued an inspection report. That is item N. During that inspection, we found that all of the items that required to be remedied two years prior, only one had been fully addressed and that was that the fire extinguishers had been placed in hazardous areas. They were not hung up and there was no signage indicating where they were and they were not tagged or inspected, but they were there. In my brief follow-up inspection yesterday, and I'm kind of skipping ahead, but I did go yesterday to check and see if anything had changed. They had had those extinguishers tagged and inspected, but they were still not hung up or marked. So that, that inspection back in January also showed that the boiler rooms are still not enclosed with fire-rated doors, not protected by sprinklers. There's still openings in the ceilings and walls that still present and will allow smoke to freely pass. There is still highly flammable fiber board in the storage rooms and electrical rooms. These rooms are still not protected by a one-hour rated assembly or sheet rock. Portable heaters are still in use in almost every room. We found none of them were UL listed and none of them had automatic shut off if tipped over. Most rooms had no smoke detectors and those that did were inoperable. The units that were installed did not meet the requirements of NFPA, as I told you before. We found that the fire alarm control panel was inoperable. And I'll touch on that briefly. Obviously, the fire alarm control panel is an essential piece of equipment in a facility like this. And we found that the fire alarm control panels was in a, what was the term it used? A default, it was in a fault status. In other words, it was, it was telling them that there was a problem and it has an audible alarm and the audible alarm had been disabled. And there had been several calls to the fire department for small things that that should have gone off, but it never did, never notified them because it had been silenced and turned off. There's photographs in the packet of that fire alarm control panel and you can see all the little lights that are lit up in that photo that shows all the different error faults and trouble faults that were showing. We found that most of the rooms had no heat. I will jump ahead again and say that yesterday, when I was there, the furnace in building room and, and it was building two was the major problem with the heat. Building two's furnace was running yesterday. It was warm to the touch on the outside. Gauge said that it was around a hundred degrees, so it was running. But a lot of the rooms, it's an old system and the rooms all have individual zone valves and many of those don't work. So even if the furnace is running, doesn't mean the people are getting heat in their rooms. We found shower walls with holes in them covered by duct tape. We found that most rooms that had kitchenette units, the kitchenette units weren't operable and in many times they were downright dangerous. Elements hanging out sporadically would come on and off. All sorts of problems with those. We found that most rooms were were full of electrical issues that ranged from no power at all to receptacles that don't work or were so old that the the plugs just fall out, which is a dangerous situation because if a plug is half in, half out and something touches those, those metal prongs, that can start a fire. Many had overloaded circuits due to being limited to only one or two outlets in the room and they were trying to run TV, refrigerator, space heater, charge their phone, run a microwave and et cetera, all off of those one or two outlets. A lot of times while doing that, that would end up tripping or blowing the fuse and then they'd be without power until somebody from the staff decided to change a fuse. We found that most of the rooms were being smoked in. We found that most of the rooms were beyond filthy and many had mold and mildew. We found that the laundry facility was inadequate for even a single-family home, let alone a motel. They have, the old commercial washers and dryers are there, but they don't work. They're using a residential unit to try and wash stuff. The dryer that they were using was not even ducted to the outside. It was just venting into the room. We found boiler exhaust pipes that were located right outside under, under and beside portable windows. Code requires that they be ten feet away. We found ceilings that were falling down in multiple rooms, the laundry room, the maintenance room all over. We found trash all over the property and all in the woods around the property. We found extension cords being run from interior receptacles to exterior security cameras all over the property. We found missing light fixtures and exposed wiring. We found holes in the floors and walls. We found that almost every room had no GFI receptacles in the bathrooms or kitchens. We found that the storage rooms had been stuffed to the rafters with old mattresses. Very nasty and I have no idea why you'd even want to keep those, but they were there. We found many rooms that had inoperable plumbing. We found rooms with plumbing held together with duct tape and caulking. We found rooms that had no traps or sometimes no piping at all underneath the sink. And they just had a bucket under there and the water just drained in the bucket and then they'd dump it in the tub when it was, when the bucket was full. In conclusion, the, the owners have had, at this point today, eight hundred and four days, which is a hundred and fifteen weeks, to complete the required repairs. It's clear that they have no intention of doing so. In the two-plus years since the original inspection, the conditions of the property have continued to deteriorate. And then finally today, as I know some of you are aware, I don't know why, maybe they can explain to us tonight, they had CMP come and shut off the power to the facility at the pole. So the remaining tenants that are in the facility now have no power. And the water district called us today and told us that the owner had requested that they turn the water off tomorrow. So as of tomorrow, the tenants will have no water either. At this time, I will take any questions or rest my case.
Thanks, Luke. Any, any councilors have any questions for CEO?
Mr. Mayor, ready?
Go ahead, Paul.
Do we have any idea how many children are living over at the, at the motel right now?
I do not. I know that Home Co-op was working to try and get people out of there as best they could. And I know that families and people with children were a priority. In my visit there yesterday, and I went over again today after the power had been shut off to try and find out what was going on, there were two kids in the parking lot. I don't know if they're living there or if they were. I have no idea why they were there, but there were two kids on the property. I don't know how many.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Sue?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Luke, you didn't mention it in your report, but the reason that the, the inspection started in two thousand eighteen, can you just clarify for the council why that, that this didn't occur?
Sure.
In the prior to?
Yep. So in two thousand seventeen, the CEO at the time, Jeff Hammond, I don't know exactly how, but it came to his attention that, that Bucksport was not in compliance with the law and that we were supposed to be issuing innkeeper's licenses. That first year, he issued licenses to the three hotel motel facilities that we have in town. He charged them five dollars and said, this is what's required. Next year, we're going to have to do inspections as part of this process. All three facilities had to get the license. All three facilities had to submit to the inspections. My understanding is the other two facilities had a few minor issues and those were quickly corrected. My understanding is the other two facilities had a few minor issues, and those were quickly corrected. So in this facility was not singled out, it was not, you know, targeted. It was just simply, you know, the CEO realized we weren't in compliance with state law, and so we brought ourselves into compliance. That's why the facility hadn't been inspected prior to that, and that's why it would have been inspected in May of eighteen had they applied for a license renewal, but they did not apply for a license renewal until December of eighteen. That is in your packet, that renewal application. And I'm assuming since they submitted that in late December of eighteen, that January eighth of nineteen was the soonest Jeff and the fire department could coordinate an inspection over there.
Thank you.
Is there a answer? Did I miss anything?
So, thinking back a little bit, are we now in the process of inspecting and issuing licenses to all the facilities? Everybody's on an equal plane, correct?
Yes, they all get inspected annually.
And they're all required to have licenses, correct?
They're all required to have licenses.
And there's a process to go through to do that, correct?
It's not too complicated. You fill out your little application, you state anything that have changed, and, you know, if you were in compliance last year, then the inspection is not too complicated. You go and look at the areas that are typically, you know, hotspots, like boiler rooms, laundry rooms, things like that. Check out a few of the hotel rooms. If things are pretty consistently looking good, then you don't have to, you know, go room by room by room. But in this situation where things were scary enough to Jeff when he did the original inspection that he felt he needed to bring in the state fire marshal's office, that's when they started going room to room to see just how bad things were.
Thank you. Anything else from the council?
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, sir.
Did the state fire marshal's office give you a reason why they weren't going to take action on this?
The state fire marshal's office and myself have had words. The state fire marshal's office says that in order for them to take action, they would have to go to the attorney general and get lawyers involved, and it's a whole process that they didn't want to get involved in. So here we are with lawyers involved, doing it ourselves. I honestly don't have a good answer for why they won't, in my mind, do their job. They disagree with me, they think they are doing their job, but I don't see how you can let things like this go. And, you know, if people die and we did nothing, I just don't see how you can.
No, just to clarify, we are following the process that is the state law, us doing this ourselves, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But we could have avoided this if the state fire marshal's office took action.
Right, but we are following the process here, correct?
Absolutely, that's why our lawyer is here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Luke. Allow, open up, I believe, Asad, are you here for representing the Spring Fountain, the Fountain Inn, I'm sorry, the Fountain Inn?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, do you have a statement or anything that you want to say in regards to this complaint?
Yes, I have some questions for Luke first, and then now some of my.
There's no question, there's no questions to Luke. This is a chance for you to present your case to the council, okay? Luke is not answering any of your questions here tonight, that is, we are in a process now where the council is looking at this, okay?
Understood, okay. So, from what I'm understanding, and I've got a quick picture of it, you know, it's called, uh, last couple of years, some background is that it was taken, uh, to know about me, and that comes from there, and that's where the financial system of a business that the town happened. And it would have been great if it just happened, then when I was buying it, I would know all that sort of problems. You know, so I bought what was not probably looked into, uh, any advice or suggestions or anything, you know, not knowing what's going on. Uh, so, you, uh, I might mention a couple of things. And a lot of things we talked about are, I'm trying to understand because I really want to make it both down and finished. Uh, is this not a problem? Is it like something like a, uh, something that needs to be called? Or is it an actual life-threatening issue, and it's going to be causing some sort of, like, that problem? Like, the fire will happen, or the building will collapse, and all that. I looked at the, that sheet, which is for, uh, for applying the license, it has a couple of items, uh, which is, uh, most of them are simple and simple, like getting the, uh, everybody should have a fire alarm, or, uh, some sort of fire detector, and all that. And, and I, I saw that, um, you know, those should be put in place, and all. Looking over this whole thing, um, I, I, I just hear right now from Luke, I saw that you mentioned a lot of things which are, uh, it's a lot of fire that are bad, or not looking good. And it should be mentioned right here, but we're managing about twenty to thirty families a day. So, there is trouble, there is like some problem that's running down. There are three people working day and night all over solving problems every day. And this is like an issue for all as well, because it's, most of it's like, most of these people are not able to pay rent for the highland and all that. So we're right now in the middle of COVID, we have carbon, paper, all that, all the expenses, all the bills, town bills, everything. Where people are not able to pay, and we're not able to work anybody, and we're just doing our best to do a good job, or at least start jobs, so people have some service, and I, and this is valuable for us to do. And I understand, uh, staff, they're overwhelmed, they're really not happy, but there's a lot of work to do every day. And I hope everybody understands that this is, but those thirty families over there, and we're managing all that. What I would like to do here, and I looked at all the violations and everything, I can see there is, uh, there's some of them broke to break, and every time I speak with my staff, there's like, there's like, okay, we did something, and then it's like broken again, um, or somebody messed it up again, and then it's just like a vicious circle, and then, um, and then we tried to fix it, and then somebody else broke it again, and it's just like going back and forth, back and forth. They're just, they're, they're spending money, and it's not being corrected, being corrected. Um, that's one of the problems I see and hear in, uh, first-hand news law. I do want to mention some of the things which Luke said that are bad, and I think they must be, uh, is what I heard from my staff. But I don't really understand that what is the actual threat to life? Things like it's a building that's going to collapse, or is it going to get on fire? Because something I have there burning, and it's just going to make fire everywhere. Uh, because he used those terms like death, and like something like colossal, and something very, very bad. And I don't understand that state is doing their job, and the officials doing their job, and they've been here a couple of times as well. He did try to involve everyone outside and to get the case from them, and they came, and they did their professional opinion. I do think if they would say there is something bad of an event going to happen, they will get involved. Eventually, if something like this does happen, they will be on the hook, because they're the one who did, they were doing everything a couple of years ago when there was a fire, and the brand-new building was made after. So I'm sure there's a lot of things they did at that point, because both of those buildings were under a microscope at that time, and a lot of things were done. So, I understand that those things are, uh, I'm trying to understand that how, how there is a life and death situation that building is so bad. I try to explain this to, uh, to my staff, like, hey, you need to see everything from a microscope point of view, and if there is some problem, we need to get that addressed right away. And people should understand, oh, this is a problem, but they're not leaving that, and all that. And one thing also, Luke, I think I spent a couple thousand dollars on getting all the mattresses and everything, which is in every place that can be a potential hazard to get fired, which I still don't understand how would it get it, but it's like, okay, if it catches fire, it will be colossal for the building. That was cleaned up, I think, a month ago, and we had a professional service came in, we had all the paperwork, that all the bills we paid to just get that cleaned up, and they did a very thorough job. I had to, I was told there was.
Yesterday.
There could be mattresses there, but I'm sure there's a lot of stuff removed from very, lot of places, lot of the stuff is, I think he didn't mention that the stuff in the back was clean, there was a trailer there, thrown in a lot of stuff that was clean. There's a lot of problems that not mentioned in this call, and I, I, if there was any, like mattresses, something, if two things are still there, there might be a reason, or there might be some reason that they're still there, but a lot of things were cleaned up. Like, I had a couple thousand dollars just spent on this job, where we removed so many things, all of the drawers and out. And that, if there was a threat like that, and I understand that, I served in the military, I worked as a safety officer for so many long years, I did my fire marshal job, I understand it could be a hazard if there is a potential. We're working with a very, very igniting material and all this, and I understand that we could catch it. I do not see that people would really go and torch it to fire up, and how would it catch fire? Either way, I understand there's some problems, apart from how we know this work, like, I do understand our problems, and they do have to be solved. I want this place to be cleared up, I want to share mine apart, to do this job, done, done, well done. I want to be working here and do some business here, and not just dealing with this on the day. We're working without license for so long, we're not able to call police, if we do see someone creating problems, stealing or using electrical wire in their own way, or if they're using extension cords or breaking into other rooms. There is so many other problems that we've talked about, when we're trying to get the PD to help, they just do not, half the time.
No, I'm going to stop, not from here, this isn't a question of that, we're looking at a specific set of circumstances here. So we've talked before in the past of how to, if you have a complaint with a town employee or something, how to deal with that, okay?
Okay, so, so, yeah, what, and now, coming back to what's going on here, you should say that we need those buildings cleared up. I'm okay if the town can help us, or those buildings, put the books in other buildings, and then get that, and whatever the work needs to be done, I'm happy to put effort in that, and get the contractors in the town, and work on those. I'm totally, totally okay with that. And, uh, and I do want to understand, and this is my first time doing this kind of thing, I don't understand how Buckport Town helped in this type of situation. I would really appreciate it if the town officer just called me and say, hey, this is your problem, this is the way I can help, and they will work with me and do that. I understand there was some local folks and they were talking to the, kind of turbo managers over there, which was not addressed. But if I had a call from town and say, hey, we know this problem, we know this is called, we know we're struggling, we know we have thirty families there, we can make a plan, sit down with you, work on a plan, and get all of these things fixed, you know? But I would really appreciate it if that could have been done back now, and if I was not able to bring that line, was like, I would just not look now, then, then we missed them. But this is not the case, and you see that Luke did mention here and there that there was some where, there was, they came in, and they looked at what's going down. Um, so a lot of things been done that. I, I, again, bring that this all to a small point, that the builders tell us, some people tell us, burn those cosmetics, burn those, like, the kind of tap, or, uh, or, you know, make sure people are not using different extension cord, all of those can be done, and a lot of spare materials needs to be burned inside the room. These are still things which are not life and death. Those things do need to be done, I do understand, and any room which is not up to that standard, I think we should go building room by room. That we are going to shut those rooms, but as a motel, or let's say, if it's a bunch of something, and all these are hotel jobs to provide, and they charge accordingly. So these are, these are those things, and a lot of people, when they're asked, it's like, they're, they're, they're on the door. Those things should be like, that these are the actual things we should be going out on and all that. Um, but I, I do understand there's a lot of things that needs to be done in a small way, and I think we can really do a job, but the first thing would be, if we really want to take the first step, is that we have everybody out, nobody there, and I can have the contractors come in and start working on it. And this is not going back.
We're getting away from what we're here for, and I appreciate that. I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions of you, Paul?
I do, I have several questions, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Sir, please forgive me, is your last name pronounced, okay to call you Mr., is it Kakan?
Uh, you can call it Khan.
Okay, thank you. Sir, when was the last time you were on this property?
I think that was a couple of years before COVID.
Okay. So early 2020, at the, at the late, at the early, latest?
I don't remember, actually.
Sure, sure. I'm going to assume, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you've had a chance to review the evidence that the code enforcement officer has submitted? In terms of the picture? Okay. You also mentioned.
There's no picture.
You haven't had a chance to review the pictures?
Pictures aren't posted.
Oh, the pic, excuse me, I, okay. The pictures have been presented as evidence this evening to us. I guess the question I'll ask you is this, you mentioned a moment ago that in your previous experience in the military in a safety position as well as a fire marshal? I guess my question is.
Yes, I did work, yeah.
Okay. Your standard of safety, when you were in that position, was whether or not actual fires were occurring at that time? As to whether or not there was a fire danger? Is that what you're asking, is that what you're presenting is?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question, both about you or doing that stuff.
Sure, a moment ago, you said that you, you didn't think that there was, that the code enforcement officer perhaps was overstating the fact, that he was stating that things, there were things that were dangerous, and et cetera, et cetera, and that you had indicated that, you didn't, you were unsure as to why that was, because there was nothing combustible or actually on fire during, at that, of those things. So my question.
What I'm stating is that, I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, please, yep.
What I'm stating is that I think we should review this, have third-party come in, or someone was not, uh, involved in this way. I don't know, I had a complaint that somebody was harassed by.
I don't know. I had a complaint and somebody was harassed by Luke. Um, so I, I, I apologize. I don't know exactly everything because I haven't seen anything now in the last month. Um, I'm, I'm very okay with this third party come, going come up with their very, uh, unbiased, uninvolved assessment of the situation. And if, if you want me to pay for it, I'm okay with that as well. Uh, it's very, very hard time for us to pay for everything right now and, and I'm okay if somebody comes in and does their fair assessment. If there is a safety issue and there is a life and death issue, I'll be the first person to very, very concerned about everybody's situation. So, uh, I, I do not want to be painted as that I'm not concerned. This is my place. I'm taking care of thirty families over there. I really want to take care of the population and I think the first step we have to take is that we know that there's none there, so we make those corrections. They don't get grabbed bounded as like, okay, this is the way it was supposed to be done. And I, and I can give you an example, this is like, the first thing was like, uh, uh, fire detector or smoke detector. Then later on, it was the fire, the fire rated sheets for that room. Then later on, it was the, uh, the GSI, uh, surface on it. The, the list keep adding up. So whenever there's a correction, maybe the next item added to it. And, and then it frustrates the management, it frustrates the folks over there. They, they, they've been saying that this is actually, I don't think it's going to ever be ever solved. It's probably some vendetta against you or something. So I do not want to put these in, uh, by my own statement and then, I, I'd rather have this done, analyzed in a very, uh, exact way.
Again, that, that, that's what we appear to try to figure out how we're going to go forward, okay? So, um, I can appreciate your statements, but we are trying to figure out what our next steps forward are, so.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one more question and then I'll, I'll stop. Um, I just have one more question. Uh, I want to, I want to, you have thirty families over there at the, approximately thirty families over at the, at the, um, fountain inn. Um, which I don't have electricity and tomorrow we're going to have water. If, if what I'm hearing is correct, if, if, um, I guess my question is, eh, eh, how safe do you suppose those thirty families? Um, how safe of a situation do you suppose they find themselves in this evening? How do you suppose they're going to be staying warm, et cetera?
Uh, and get this solved as, as what's the town decide and work with the team, work with me and get this solved. But this, uh, I think you mentioned about water and all that. This was, uh, something I would do to follow up with the client on what's going on. They've been working on this from, uh, last couple of months extensively. And I, and, and the management can, I don't, I don't think any one from the motel is there. I want to get, I, I told them a couple of months ago when they said that there is a, there's, they're not being cared. And I said, fear not, they need to be there, they need to inspect and I need to know exactly what's going on and what's the problem. I cannot be there, but I really want to know. So I, I really want this to be solved and this is, I think, a thing that we, we do a fair assessment on their situation. And, uh, whatever needs to be done, we can do it. I think one, and, and, and I'm helpful, I'm very grateful, actually, that town is going to help with moving everyone somewhere so, so we can really work on that. Otherwise, we will keep having this meetings and calls and there's going to be more items. We'll, 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 but I saw trash today and I saw there was no water, uh, or the faucet was leaking or something, you know, those, those issues. Uh, we have to solve them that way. I, I think, and I'm happy to hear what town has to say about it. And then how we can solve it. I'm here to solve this and I really want to, uh, talk about that.
Anybody else from the council, Danny?
Did, did you, when you received letters, um, did you contact Luke?
I think probably Luke has been always in contact with someone from the management.
But did you contact him? Cause you had mentioned that, you had mentioned that if.
I know I manage the operation of the place. I am not the manager that I was wanting to do over there.
So, you, you.
They're not able to do their job and that's why I'm here to discuss this.
So as the, as the owner of the establishment, you received notice and you passed that on to the management? You didn't contact Luke yourself or the town yourself?
All the notices are sent at the hotel. They are not sent to me.
How did you receive this notice for tonight?
I got a call from, I had a voicemail and then I just got a labor which was shared by my staff with, uh, FIBR. And, uh, I did a letter of safe during home. Uh, and that they were being tapped about what's going on, that's how I reached.
And I, we, we have your correct address, I believe, in Jersey City?
Yes, uh, the telephone, yes.
Okay, so you have received correspondence from the town?
Just the last one about this meeting, yes.
You have not received any other correspondence from the town?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else from the council? So I, I, I want to just check again. I, I didn't hear the answer. You, you, it was, it was stated to us that the power was turned off and the water is being turned off. You're not aware of that? Is that what you're saying?
I hope you can find out from the management what's going on. I think we're working on some, uh, power should probably, something on the, they're being working on this, whatever, and, uh, what, what's going on. I, I was under impression that, uh, they're still working on it. Uh, and it's all been, after that.
Okay, thank you. Luke?
Uh, after the power was turned off today, I drove over to the motel and talked with the staff that were there and they knew nothing about it. And when I told them that the water was due to be turned off tomorrow, they knew nothing about that.
Okay, thank you.
And if there were any contractors scheduled to be on site, if there was an electrician hired to be there, and they said, no, absolutely not. In fact, the girl I spoke with said she's the one that's in charge of trying to hire contractors and she said there are none scheduled to be there this week at all.
Okay, thank you.
So who did you speak with?
Katie. I tried to speak with Alicia, but she wouldn't answer her phone or reply to text messages.
Okay, I think Alicia is the manager and Katie was the reception person.
All right, thank you. Um, anyone else from the council that has anything? Uh, so do you have anybody else that wants to speak on your behalf, um, representing the fountain inn?
I don't have a disbursement.
Okay. Um, is there anybody else who on this call that we need to hear from?
We have a representative of one of the mortgage holders, um, for this property who, um, received a, an invitation and there was, um, one, uh, person who said they had personal knowledge of the building conditions. Who asked for an email link at all. That was, um, in the advertisement for this. Because our, our practice is to, to have people in the meeting that, um, can make, um, direct reference to any agenda items that, um, I, I had advertised this, that, that only people who had personal knowledge of c- conditions would, could contact, you know, get one. And one person did that. And as I said, um, one mortgage holder representative is also on this call. And I'm not sure if the person who res- requested that, the, the public person is on the call, but I do believe that the mortgage holder is.
Okay, do you have a name?
Kim Smith.
Um, Ms. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Hi, good evening. No, not at this time. I do not. Thank you.
And you represent, I'm sorry, you represent?
I'm the, yep, so, uh, Kim Smith. I'm the director of lending for Eastern Main Development Corporation and we are lien holder.
Thank you. Is there, is there, um, what was the name of the person who contacted you?
Mark Leathers.
Is Mark Leathers on this call?